Good evening. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the May 24, 2022 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of the Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at Nashua, N H dot gov slash Agenda Center. And there you would select the zoning board of adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the proceeding and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for up to 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage the speaking time. However, Kate Poirier, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question or comment. Please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning board vote in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. For the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a four of the three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has a right to contest the decisions that this Board makes. Should we render this decision if you believe it's an error, you have the right to request a review. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we, I will, we have the following four board members in attendance. We have myself, Mary Ellen McKay, Chair. We have Steve Lionel, Vice Chair. We have Jack Courier, Clerk on Zoom. We have Mr. J.P. Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. We also have the following alternate member in attendance, Mr. J. Mancara. In addition to board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, the zoning coordinator. I will start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. For board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. Mr. Steve Lionel.
Present.
Mr. Jack Courier.
Jack Courier is present. I'm on Zoom. I'm away on a pre-planned trip. There's no one else in the room, and I just wanted to say that partway through your presentation, Madam Chair, the audio, at least on Zoom, dropped down to audible, but very audible, barely audible.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
It's still kind of soft. It was, it was, it was fine about halfway through your presentation, and then it dropped low, at least in my Zoom, and I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Okay, thank you. Uh-oh, here comes Jimmy to the rescue.
We'll switch it up.
Okay. That's okay. No, life happens. Jack, is this better?
Oh, much better. It's perfectly clear now.
Thank you, and thanks for that. Mr. J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Alan Pipers.
Present.
Mr. J. Mancara.
Present.
We have four regular members present at the table. We have one regular member on Zoom, and we have one alternate. Should a regular member not be able to participate by self-recusal, then Mr. Mancara, the alternate, will take part in the voting. However, all members take part in the deliberation. Now, I will read the first case into the record, maybe. Dawn B. Micho, owner. Dawn Micho and Alan Piper's applicants, 160 Chestnut Street, Sheet 100, Lot 160, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback on Level Street to construct an attached 6-by-20 roofed farmer's porch. This is in the RA zone and in Ward 6. Is there somebody present to present this case? Would you please step up to the mic? And when you do, would you state your name and address for the record, since this is recorded?
So, my name is Dawn Micho. This is my husband, Alan Piper, and we're the owners of 160 Chestnut Street.
Excuse me, it might be helpful to pull the mic down a little bit towards you.
Better? Better?
I think so.
Yeah, we're having microphone issues tonight.
I guess.
Okay, you have, did you want to state your name also, sir?
If you want me to?
Yes.
My name is Alan Piper, and I also live at 160 Chestnut Street.
Okay, the floor is yours. You have up to 15 minutes.
Okay, so today we're asking for a variance to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required setback. My house, as you can see, is on a corner lot. The proposed farmer's porch will be plenty far back from the front on the Chestnut Street side. They'll be a remain in 11 and 1/2 feet. On the Lovell side, my current house is now six feet from the property line, so where we want to build a farmer's porch, we would have to ask for a four-foot encroachment. As you can see in that picture where the white fence is, that is our property line, but it doesn't really appear to be, but it is. So, I don't think that, you know, building the farmer's porch will look like it's really close to the property line. If you go up and down Chestnut Street, there is plenty of farmer's porches. Some of them are in that neighborhood, very close to the street, the sidewalk, where ours would be set back a little, but, so I think that's all that I have to say.
Mr. Shaw, you may ask.
So, I just, I think, just want to make sure that it's clear. So, the farmer's porch will be on the Chestnut Street frontage of the house.
Correct.
But because, and it's really going to follow pretty much the, the front facade of the existing house.
Correct.
The problem is that even just extending the porch on the front of the house, your house is already encroaching. So, you're, you're just basically maintaining a similar encroachment as the house already has, and this porch will then also have. But it's not like you're bringing the porch further into the setback or doing anything like that.
No.
Or trying to do anything special on that Level Street side.
Right. Only on one side is the encroachment.
Right.
Which is keep it in line with the house. The house, the front of the house on the Chestnut Street side right now is 20 feet.
Yeah.
So, where, our intention is to keep it with the line of the house instead of, if we brought it in the 10 feet, then it would kind of look like not symmetrical, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? I don't see any other questions from the Board. I'm now going to ask if there's anyone in support. You may sit down, or you can stand. It's your call, but you'd probably feel better sitting.
I'll sit down.
Okay, fine. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in support of the application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
I'm in support of the application. It makes sense, and because it's important a lot, I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm, I'm in support of the application. I think Mr. Shaw's question captured an important part of this case, which is, you know, the house is situated as is, and there's no further encroachment. And I think the proposed farmer's porch, you know, like the house, right on the right side of it, has a little attachment on the front, which this proposed farmer's porch would be no further towards Chestnut Street than the abutting house. I think it meets all the criteria, and I learned how to properly pronounce Lovell Street from the presentation tonight.
Thank you, so did I. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application. I'm reasonable to not bother with the side porch.
Mr. Shaw.
I'm likewise in support, and pretty much for the reasons stated already. It's, you know, with the existing house's encroachment, the placement of the porch is such that it's consistent with the house. There's no actual encroachment into the Chestnut Street frontage, and it'll, I think, could be a very natural addition to the, to the home.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I also support the application for the reasons stated, and would just add that the porch itself is a reasonable use, and its size is not excessive.
Thank you, and I too am in support, Mary Ellen McKay, of the application for all the aforementioned reasons, and it would probably look aesthetically strange if your porch was cut six feet short. Just saying. Would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Dawn Micho, and the applicant, Dawn Micho, and Alan Piper's, at 160 Chestnut Street, Sheet 100, Lot 160. The request is for a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback on Level Street to construct an attached 6-foot by 20-foot roofed farmer's porch. This is in the RA zone. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Basically, the, the home is already set, several feet, the four feet that is being requested. The home itself is already four feet into that front yard setback, which is functioning really like a side yard setback for, at least the way this home is physically placed at the intersection. The farmer's porch will not encroach into the Chestnut Street required front yard setback, and the use is reasonable and would be consistent with, with the existing home. So, there's, and there's no other obvious way for the applicant to achieve this addition of the porch. So, it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest. Substantial justice will be served, and with that, I move to approve the area of variance.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. So, that is a unanimous decision. Alan, congratulations. Your variance has been granted. Understand that any decision made by this Board can be appealed. You have, they have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, concerns, comments, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. Other than that, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. And before I read the second case. Mr. Courier, I was remiss. Mr. Sullivan is in the room. I happened to look up and notice him, and I wanted to let you know for our records.
I'll update the attendance right now, and just one other bit of feedback. Mr. Boucher was hard to hear. I'm not sure if, it sounded just like your voice did on that last vote, but I did hear that it was a positive affirmation to the last case.
Okay, well, third time's a charm, so that's our third mic. We have another one over here, though. Please let us know, Mr. Courier, if we can't hear Mr. Boucher, and we'll trade out mics for him.
Will do.
Thank you very much. I will now read the second case into the record. Jeremy and Melissa Mulaney, owners, 17 March Street, Sheet A, Lot 514, requesting special exception from land use code Section 190-16E3, Table 16-2, for a minor encroachment up to 2.9 feet into the 10-foot required right side yard setback to remove existing attached carport and construct an attached 27-by-33 single-story two-car garage with rear storage area. This is in the RA zone in Ward 7. Is somebody here to present the case? And please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Jeremy Mulaney, 17 March Street. I'm the owner of the property with my wife.
Thank you very much. The floor is yours for up to 15 minutes.
Great, thank you. So, we are looking for a special exception for minor encroachment of up to 2.9 feet into the side setback of the border shared with 15 March Street, and basically that just gives us a little bit more room to construct a two-car garage. We've talked to all the neighbors, no issues, and there's a letter, I think, in the packet from the owners of 15 March Street, and they have no issues at all. They're very well aware of the plans.
That's it. That was short and sweet. Does anyone have any questions? I don't. Mr. Shaw.
Just, just for completeness, it looks like this structure is already about as narrow as most people would propose for a two-car garage, and I'm assuming to go any narrower, you would have been faced with a one and a half car or just a single car garage.
Yeah, opening car doors becomes an issue.
Yeah, yeah, so, I just, I mean, sometimes we see requests that were for wider structures than this, and there might be, you know, a little bit extra, but to me, this looks very much like you've already pared it back to about the bare minimum of what you can do for a two-car garage.
Yeah, we tried to go smaller to fit within the setback, and it was just too small, so that little, I mean, that up to like almost three feet.
Yeah.
Really just allows space in between the cars.
Yeah.
Two average cars.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I will ask if there is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application? Mr. Mulaney, if you want, you may sit, or you can continue to stand.
Thank you.
That is your choice. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who has any questions, comments, concerns, or objection to this application?
I want to see the letter.
Oh, yeah, and I meant to do that. When Mr. Mulaney mentioned the letter, I pulled it. This is a letter in support. "To the Nashua Zoning Board, we, the residents of 15 March Street, Russell and Sheila Kootu, are aware of the special exception being requested by Jeremy and Melissa Mulaney of 17 March Street. We have no objections to the exception or the plans for a garage," and this is signed by both Russell and Sheila Kootu, dated April 23rd. I am now going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier.
In summary, I'm in support of the application, kind of following on with what Mr. Shaw had mentioned. There is an existing side door. When I first got the application, it looked like, you know, a really wide garage, but there, you know, there's, I think, reasonable room to walk in to access the existing side of the house, and the garage itself for the cars is a little less than 24 by 24, which I think probably an arguable point as a typical garage. So, it is, I think, a modestly small garage, and I don't think the ask for the length of it is, is overreaching. It's good to have a little extra storage space. I appreciate the fact that the abutter number 15 was consulted, and we have their affirmation of this, and also the fact that it's one-story, I think, doesn't make it look, you know, out of place and kind of in character with the neighborhood. So, I'm all good with it and in support. I think it meets all the criteria.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application, pretty much for the reasons Mr. Courier gave.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I likewise am in support, and I don't think I have anything else to add.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I'm also in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
And I am also in support of the application.
Thank you, and myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I'm also in support, and with the extra little bit of length, trucks today are kind of big, and so, I don't know if he has a truck, but if he does, he's, he's got his base covered. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Lionel, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Jeremy and Melissa Mulaney. The address is 17 March Street, Sheet A, Lot 514, requesting special exception from land use code Section 190-16E3, Table 16-2, for a minor encroachment to encroach up to 2.9 feet into the 10-foot required right side yard setback to remove an existing attached carport and construct an attached 27-foot by 33-foot single-story two-car garage with rear storage area. This is the RA zone, Ward 7. This is listed in the table of uses. The Board does not believe it will create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. There's no evidence that it will overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The special regulations are not fulfilled. There are no special conditions required here, and that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. So, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Mulaney, congratulations. Your special exception has been granted. As we've stated, anyone has up to 30 days to challenge any decision made by this Board. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier in the Planning Department, and they will help you. Again, thank you for your presentation, and congratulations. Moving on to case number three. Gordon Palmerville and Miranda Jean Palmerville, owners, 77 Hills Ferry Road, Sheet 56, Lot 147, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 6-foot required rear yard setback to construct a 10-by-16 shed. This is in the RA zone in Ward 3. Is somebody here to present the case? Please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please, and if the mic is too short, you can pick it up or take it out and hold it.
My name is Gordon Palmerville. I am owner at 77 Hills Ferry Road, and I am here to ask for a variance to place our shed within three feet of our rear fence. I had, I'm used to doing presentations in PowerPoint, so I did make a PowerPoint and sent it out. So, from the request, we had five points of law that we had to address. Granting the requested variance will not be contrary to public interest. Granting this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare. As you can see in the pictures on the next slide, there are already many sheds in our neighborhood with less than six feet from adjacent property lines. Granting this variance will be in accordance with character of the neighborhood. I've attached two aerial photos. One is the zoom in within our near neighborhood, and the other one zooms out to a much further aspect of our neighborhood, and within that area, there are 10 sheds alone that all encroach within at least three feet, I mean, with it, that are less than the six feet from the encroachment of the adjacent property lines. Some of them are in corners and are encroaching on two property lines. So, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance because, the spirit of the ordinance, I'm not exactly sure what the spirit was, so I had to think about that, but observe that we will not be encroaching on anyone's yard. There's current fencing in place throughout the entire neighborhood, so we're really not encroaching on anyone's yard. The presence of nine sheds in our neighborhood already with this type of location in people's backyards kind of suggests that if, if enforced, it would be against the spirit of the neighborhood. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance. This one has a picture as well, and as you can see on the back, I have a, a 12-by-16-foot deck on the back of my, my house. I have two lines marked out there. One would be if I was allowed to have the setback, the other one would be where my shed would be if I couldn't have the setback. This would create a very narrow pathway between my existing deck and where the shed would be, and it would create a ton of useless space behind the shed where the fence is. So, I mean, I'd have, I'd then have a bunch of unusable space. This will also help with a lot of storage space, too, so we can actually use our garage for its intended purpose. The proposed use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties. In granting this variance, we will not be diminishing any property value in the area. If anything, we would be enhancing it with, with the quality construction that we plan on doing there. We're going to have post-woodworking, which is a very reputable place, build us a very nice shed back there. It will match with the new construction of the neighborhood behind us. Special conditions exist. Special conditions exist such that little enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. Little enforcement of this ordinance would create unnecessary hardship in that it would greatly reduce the usable square footage of my backyard for family gatherings, to be able to use it for possible future kids or grandkids in the future. It would create much less space for us to use in our backyard. And it would create a ton of useless space on the other side of the shed. And that would be a, I mean, I'd have difficulty getting my lawnmower back there and actually taking care of that area with the narrow, with that space there. And that's the five points of law that I had to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please step up, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jeff Smith, and I'm the only neighbor that butts without a fence. So I just wanted to say that I'm just fine with it, no problem. Any other neighbor has a fence separating them anyway, so.
Mr. Smith, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, 75 Hills Ferry Road. So it's actually in the corner of that picture that you saw.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to the application? I don't see any. Kate, do you? Thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher.
I'm in support of the application in general. I think it's a reasonable request. I think that, you know, we have enough experience with these, that we understand what applicants are looking for. I also believe, again, the applicant made a real good case in the fact that if we put the shed, if the shed was placed within the setbacks, you know, without, it didn't violate setbacks, then again, sometimes it practically looks like the shed's in the middle of the yard. So with that, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shaw.
I likewise am in support. I think, you know, the nature of a smaller yard like this, a larger deck is such, I agree with Mr. Boucher's point. I'd also like to just commend Mr. Palmerville that, I mean, this is, you know, the kind of thing most people never deal with, and I thought he had a lot of nice thoughtful, you know, points. And, you know, going through something like this, it probably hasn't ever had to think about before. So it's not easy to interpret those questions, and I just appreciate his effort to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I also support the application and echo the comment. It was a great presentation. But overall, I mean, again, because of the small size of the yard, the shed itself is a customary use. And although good size, it's certainly not oversized. So the application makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, I'd just comment that I note that this is a small, non-conforming lot that we, that got split off from a neighbor's lot. But I think it's a reasonable use, and I agree that trying to enforce the ordinance in this case would be unreasonable, so I will support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm in support for the reasons already mentioned by the other board members.
Thank you. And I, too, am in support, and I, too, echo Mr. Shaw's comments. Presentation was really nice. We're not used to getting, you know, from an apkin a PowerPoint, so, thank you. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Gordon Palmerville and Miranda Jean Palmerville, owners of 77 Hills Ferry Road, Sheet 56, Lot 147, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback to construct a 10-by-16 shed. It's in the RA Zone Ward 3. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, simply stated, it is a smaller backyard, and having the shed placed within, not within the setback, would create unusable space in the back of the shed, and, again, notably, a very small space between the deck and the shed. And again, the yard is relatively small in this respect. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonable feasible for the applicant to pursue than the variance. We find it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Palmerville, congratulations. Your area variance has been granted. As we stated to each person tonight, anyone has an option to appeal a decision made by this board. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, refer, please, to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department, and they have 30 days with which to do that appeal. Again, thank you for your application. Thank you for your PowerPoint, and congratulations. Move on to case number four. I apologize in advance if I really destroy this name. Samuel Der Kazarian owner, Vahan Der Kazarian applicant, 6-8 Highland Street, Sheet 68, Lot 77, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, 9,045 square feet existing, 10,455 square feet required to convert third-floor space in an existing two-family building into an additional dwelling unit for a total of three units. This is in the RC Zone Ward 3. Is there somebody here to present this application? Please state your name, sir, and your address for the record.
My name is Vahan Der Kazarian. I'm Sam Der Kazarian's son. Sam is the owner of Eight Highland.
And your address?
I reside in Massachusetts right now, 144 Stowe, Massachusetts.
Thank you. The floor is yours. You have up to 15 minutes to present your case.
Thank you. We're looking to request a variance to turn the third floor into its own separate dwelling. I've been staying at that property for approximately four years now. My father, a couple of years more than that. He recently moved to Georgia, and so I've taken the responsibility of caretaking for that property. It would be significantly easier for me to keep my eye on the property and do the regular upkeep that's required for a Victorian house like that if I was on the premises. It would also help me immensely as it would help me avoid, you know, new moving costs and, you know, stay in an area that I'm familiar with for, you know, the foreseeable future. The way that that building is currently configured is that the second floor has two bedrooms, a living room, and then the addition of that third space would be a separate room. If you take a look at the blueprint, there's a separate living room, a living space, and then a small kitchenette with a bathroom. Currently, you know, with the way things are going, it would be far too expensive to rent as a whole unit. That would be horrible for anyone, and we don't want to ask that of anyone, that we're renting, especially not our downstairs tenants that we have right now. We very much like them. We'd like to keep them for as long as possible. And so we think that it would be optimal to separate the two units. That way, we can make sure that the current tenants aren't getting raises rented on them, rents raised on them. And that way, I can inhabit that. And, you know, moving forward, that would probably also increase, you know, property values in the area. Any changes that, you know, if we did go with the variance, there wouldn't be any changes to the exterior of the building. It wouldn't change curb appeal, with the exception of a secondary fire escape. And just based on the general neighborhood, there's a number of houses in that area that do have, I guess, secondary exit coming from third floor. So we don't think that would be abnormal for the neighborhood. That's all.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw.
I just want to make sure I do understand. I think you're saying that you're really not also changing even the number of bedrooms that would be available. You're just essentially dividing up that second and third floor.
Correct.
Into two different units.
Correct. Currently, the first floor is six Highland. The second and the third floor at the current moment is eight Highland. We'd like to turn it so that the second floor is only eight, and the third would be however the city decides to mark that unit. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Courier.
I was wondering if the applicant could clarify the parking that's available. It looks like the parking is, I would call it, out back on Highland Place.
Yes. Yes, so we have.
Parking spots are there?
We do have ample parking. We currently can hold up to five cars, six if you got creative with parking. But we do also have enough area where if we needed to repave, that could be considered. But currently, we allot two parkings to our first-floor tenants, two parkings to our second-floor tenants, and if it was just me, we would just need that one car. So five parking spots is, you know, what we have available right now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Lionel.
What is the, if this third floor was turned into a separate unit, what is the access to it from the outside?
We have a front-door access that leads to the third floor via staircase, and then we would have to place a second, secondary exit for fire escape. Currently, that would be likely on the backside. If, I guess, if you look from aerial, it would be where the separate living room dwelling would be. So, sorry, my eyes are not.
We can't see that monitor.
You can't even see that. Okay, so it would basically.
We have the drawings.
Yeah, it would basically be right by the.
We can see this one, but I don't know.
No, no, definitely. It would just be right by the driveway would be the secondary exit. So you'd have front and then back exits.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? I have one. Mr. Falk, we have a letter from the owner. It just states that his son has his authority to represent him. Does that need to be read in? Okay.
I wouldn't think so.
I just, it's a letter. I just wanted to clarify. I wanted to make sure.
We have it in the record, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there, yes, you may sit or you may stand. It's your call. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to the application? I didn't see any. Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw.
I feel generally in support of this. I mean, it's one of these situations where I don't see any real change in intensity of use. It's really just dividing up the use that's already there. And so.
Thank you.
I don't know what the rest of the board has to say, but at least initially, I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Minkara.
I struggled a bit with this one, but I think I've landed on Mr. Shaw's view. Just, you know, overall, the character of the neighborhood is mixed. There are rather multifamilies. The density doesn't seem like it would be inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. The request to deviation isn't great, and I think the overall intensity wouldn't increase, so that inclines me to support the application. It also appears that they can accommodate the parking on the site so it wouldn't overflow onto the street or other properties.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I was struggling with this for a bit, but I, as Mr. Minkara said, I feel I've landed where Mr. Shaw has, which I don't think the intensity is going to be increased at all. And this neighbor, it is in character, I think, with this neighborhood, and especially because there's onsite parking available, I don't think it's going to cause any problem. And the overage is not that much. So I was struggling, but I feel I throw my support at it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application for the reasons that Mr. Shaw and Mr. Minkara gave.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also support the application for all of the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Samuel Der Kazarian owner, Vahan Der Kazarian, the applicant, at 6-8 Highland Street, Sheet 68, Lot 77. The request is for a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area where 9,045 square feet is existing and 10,455 square feet are required. And this is to convert a third-floor space in an existing two-family building into an additional dwelling unit for a total of three units. This is in the RC Zone. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Primarily, the usage is such that there's no change in intensity, and it's dividing up a three-bedroom space into one two-bedroom and one one-bedroom units. The deviation from the requirement is relatively minor. There'll be no changes to appearance of the exterior of the building, except for the noted need to install an exterior fire escape to provide proper egress from the third-floor unit. It would be, and so there's no other means for the applicant to pursue other than this variance request. It would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, again, for some of the same reasons. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. This neighborhood has already mixed use with a number of other multifamily units. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. And with that, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That is a unanimous decision. Your application has been granted, and congratulations. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier in the Planning Department. And thank you very much for your presentation. Again, congratulations. Is everyone okay to continue? We will move to case number five. Kristen and Stephen Morrow owners, 7 Meredith Drive, Sheet F, Lot 163, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-17E to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 19 feet existing, 44 feet proposed. This is in the R9 Zone in Ward 1. Is there somebody here to present the application? Please step up, sir. State your name and address for the record. Yeah, you could take that out if it's easier for you.
That's fine, I can lean down. My name's Stephen Morrow. I live at 7 Meredith Drive. The original plan was just to redo my driveway, but I wanted to talk to the city if my street was on the list to be paved, and it wasn't. So I had the city surveyor come out, I believe his name was Mark Jenkins, Jennings, maybe. So I had the city surveyor come out, I believe his name was Mark Jenkins, Jennings, maybe. He came out and said that my driveway sits too low. The street's high and my property is down here. So he said even repaving the street would not stop the flooding issue that I have in my front yard. So I'm here to request my driveway to be paved in additional, I believe it's twenty feet to the right of my driveway. So when the water comes down the street, it could hit the front of my driveway and run down to the drain instead of just pooling in my front driveway and in my front yard. So that's the only reason why I'm requesting a revariance, because he said even if they paved the street, I'm still going to have that problem. And my current driveway, I believe, is nineteen feet.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, your hands went up simultaneously. Mr. Mincara.
Did you look at other alternatives to address the drainage? Drywells, the drainage swale, some other way of accommodating that water other than expanding your driveway?
I'd have to run that along the street all the way down. Either that or the city would have to put a new drain right in front of my house.
Thank you.
Mr. Lionel.
Actually, Mr. Mincara asked the question I was going to ask, so.
Okay. Mr. Boucher.
Just for clarification for all of us and all people who may be watching or listening, the current drain for the street is located where in reference to your house?
If you're looking at the front of my house, it is to the right in between, right on the property line, and the water can't get down there. It's just the way of the street. Maybe once they repave it, it'll get down there. But if I redo my driveway and add that section and make it a little bit higher so the water hits that and acts like a curve, it could run down there. So pretty much I'd have to pull in my, and I'd go up and in just a little bit, just to give a little elevation. Because right now, it just floods down. I have pictures. I didn't get them in in time, but I have them on me of what the water looks like.
So just to probe out a little further. Mr. Mincara asked, you know, one question that we usually ask other options. So the berm or the, what you're proposing, would that be the whole length of the additional driveway? You're looking to add this berm?
Well, that would be, it wouldn't be just a berm, and then I'd put, you know, raise the yard up a little bit and grow new grass. That would be the actual driveway. So I'd have a parking area off to the side, and then I'd have the main driveway. But that would act, the end of the driveway would act like a diverter to run the water down to the drain.
So that additional nineteen feet that you're proposing to add, and I get, I'm just trying to get a picture, because I don't, I don't see a picture of exactly the berm or whatever. I'm trying to picture this in my mind. The entrance to the driveway that faces, that would enter into the garage is that part of the driveway, right? Would that have a berm and you have to drive over what you're proposing?
It would just be a little hump, because I'd have to raise the driveway up a little bit and pitch it. It's never going to be as level as high as the street. The street's really high.
Right.
My property's low.
So, so again, I think I understand you, you're asking for that section of pavement to the left specifically, not to address any parking issues you have, but basically to address flooding issues you have.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And it would add parking, obviously.
Would you say you have, so, but obviously, as you know, the city allows twenty-four feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And just, I'm just, you know, observing your property, what I saw was, and I'm just wondering if there was anything else that was missing. And we always look, again, like Mr. Mincara says, there are the alternatives. So if there was a parking issue, you know, I looked at your property saying, well, we could get, we could gain additional parking if you needed to be as real, what we usually see as an expansion, you know, we're building the driveway and it bears up to like, you know.
Your case would be to the left and to the side of the garage. But that's not what you're proposing again. That's what most people do in the day. I see that the street, driveway goes up and then there's a spot.
Right.
There's only one other house that has what I'm requesting, and that's behind me in the neighborhood. And then there's a new house they built at the end of the street that has a super wide driveway. So it's not, it'd be due purpose. I could park there and it would keep the water from pooling in my front yard.
All right, so is pavement the only option you have in your mind? Do you follow what I'm saying, is there, is there something else that you could possibly do? May not be within what you are wanting to do, but, you know, are there other options to divert that water, basically in a, in a re-landscaping type of, and I know this is a problem that, that you believe is a, is a city issue with the street and the drainage there. I don't disagree with you. But currently, could you achieve that by some other landscaping method that's not necessarily surface, impervious surface that you can park on? Do you understand?
Yes, like, like a drain of some sort. But that would have to run along the whole front of my property, all the way down to the drain, because that's where you would want it to go, correct?
Yeah, I understand. The part of the, the open part of the driveway, let's just say the driveway you have now, right? What you're proposing in the end would be, you're driving up a little bit and then you're going to go down?
No.
No?
Just, just a little.
Just a little hump?
Just a little hump and then straight. The whole, that whole front forty-four feet would be just a little hump and then flat. So it's not like I'm creating a berm for a sidewalk or anything like that.
Right. And again, just to give you a couple of, just the way I understand what you want. So could, could you achieve the same thing by putting that hump that you want in the driveway?
Fixing the garage.
So, and whether or not you expand it twenty-four feet, we'll do it as, and in some other format, I don't know what, using other types of materials or something else, creating that diversion instead of paving that whole area?
That's where the deepest cut in the road is, right at my driveway. So if I just did a twenty-four feet and made a little hump, that water's just going to pool to the right and stay there on the grass side instead of on the driveway. That's.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Carrier.
Yeah, maybe I'm missing something, but I think I heard that the drain is on the right-hand side of the property as you look at the property. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, if you're looking at my house, it's right on the property line between my neighbor and I.
And, and on the right-hand side as you look at your house?
Yes, if you're staring at my front door, if you look to the right, there's a drain over there.
Okay. So when it's raining, is the water running down the street from the left side of your house to the right side of your house?
No. It just pools.
No.
And then when the, when it gets big enough in my driveway, it'll start running down to the drain. Because in front of my house, it goes up and it goes back down. It's all because of the street, and that's why I asked if they were going to pave before I did anything to my driveway, and he said I wasn't on the list.
Well, I guess, like, I'm, I'm struggling with, like, in the neighborhood I live in, it's, it's like on the hillside. So all the houses on one side of the street, the driveways go up, and all the houses on the other side of the street, the driveways go down. And if or when there's issues with water running off the street, because obviously it's going downhill, there's just like a curb, a berm. You know, sometimes it's just a few inches high, sometimes it might be eight or nine inches high that homeowners have to keep the water running, you know, down the street. And I, I guess I'm just, I guess I don't understand why that wouldn't, wouldn't work in this application, just have a berm to, to not have it go down your, you know, the driveway.
It, it could. I just didn't know if I could do that because it would be right on the street. I don't know what the curb cut is that the city allows. So if I was to have the paving company that did my driveway put a berm in, that would absolutely work.
Yeah. You know, I guess, you know, I, to me, that would be an option worth exploring versus, you know, such an overage on the driveway, because it's, I guess that's just where I'm at, I'm at. I'm struggling with, with that wide of a driveway, you know. To me, it's, you know, just, I think the twenty-four feet is plenty wide for a, you know, typical home and in that area, but that, that's just where I'm at. So I guess, thank you, you've answered my question.
Okay, Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit puzzled because, let's say that you built this driveway extension that would prevent the water from coming in over the driveway, but your yard continues for some period down towards the drain. Why isn't the water going in there, or what would stop the water from going in there?
Again, because the driveway is low, and then after my, if you're standing in my driveway looking at the street, it's low here and then it rises up. So it takes a lot of water in my driveway to start, to push it over that hump and then down to the drain.
And have you consulted a, a company that specializes in drainage issues and asked them for a suggestion or a quote on, on other ways of, like, installing a, well, I'll call a French drain system, but a drainage pipe along the front of your, your property leading towards the street drain?
I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boucher.
I have a question, Mr. Falk.
You're probably going to ask my question. Go ahead.
Mr. Falk, I think, the point we're getting to, I think, is what the applicant just kind of talked about. What, what would it take or, or what would it be for, for the applicant just to have, simply have a, if it's, I'll talk, whatever, of a reasonable berm placed on the, on the left side of this driveway? Is that something that, if you've ever seen done or requested, or is that something that, that could work with the city? And I'm just trying to understand, you know, options instead of this overage on a whole pavement driveway? Can you, can you request something like that on, on that section of property?
It's certainly an option to look into, depending on what the berm is made out of. If it's, you know, compacted soil, or if it's concrete or asphalt, that might help with the flow, but, you know, like you said, after his driveway, it kind of slopes up a little bit, so it'd have to be a lot to get the water to run past his property. I mean, I'm not a civil engineer to really answer that question exactly. I don't really have an answer for that. I don't have the qualifications to answer it, but I'm sure something like that could be done. I've seen all kinds of berms and paved little channeled areas that can run water away from some of his property, but you'd probably have to look into a company that would do that.
So.
I mean, we would look into it for sure.
Yeah.
It's definitely an option.
He said, let's just say that a paving company that he hires to redo his driveway, say, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll run some, a curving in a hot tub, so basically a curb size, you know, hot tub, just to keep the water on the street to the point where it hits his driveway, and then he's taking care of the rest of his driveway, the entrance of his driveway. I guess my question is, is that something that he would have to go to the city for first to ask to do that? Because that's on, obviously, city property, and whether or not that anything complies with standards for curbing. I guess when I'm, so, again, I'm just trying to understand what, if that's an option, and I'm asking you if you can do it, I'm just asking, how would one go about that? Because that makes a difference on how I'm thinking about this.
It's certainly an option. Anything in the right of way would be up to the Department of Public Works to look at, you know, specific plans and things. It's worth asking them about it. I can't answer for their department and what they would want in the right of way. That's their purview, not ours, so. It's certainly an option.
Okay.
It might be a lot more, a lot more complex than, than we think as far as how water's going to run from left to right, I'm sorry, from right to left on his property to adequately drain to his liking away from his property.
Mr. Morrow, I'd like to ask you a question, sir. Would you consider tabling this for tonight to get your, all of these questions answered, which may or may not save you some money or save you, I don't know what the decision would be, but we're here to ensure that citizens get the biggest bang for their buck almost. You're, you're gonna, you know, get all the options so that it can happen. And I would rather have that happen for you, as I think the entire board would, rather than to have you maybe get an unfavorable decision and then have to go through a much more involved process. So for me, my question is, and I think maybe the board might be leaning in this or could lean in this direction as well, would be to give you certain time to look at that and then ask Mr. Carter about putting, or Mr. Falk, about putting you, maybe not within two weeks, I don't know if that can be done, but maybe before the end of June so that you have some time. Would that be a consideration?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Mr. Falk.
If I could say one more thing.
Sure.
The city surveyor said, as far as the berm, he said that would have to be approved through here also. I, I said, can I just put a berm in? And he says, no.
Okay, so, and the city would have to weigh in.
Yes.
The street department, and none of us can make that call.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Falk.
I would suggest recommending that the applicant's case be tabled to the second meeting in June.
Okay.
We're going to have to see some, as well as the board's going to have to see something in writing from DPW that states that another viable option may be, may be better than just paving the driveway a little bit wider. So I think that's what we would want, and I think that's what the board's going to want.
Yeah, I think that's what we would want. So in that, to that, I'm going to make a motion to table this application to our second meeting in June.
Twenty-eight.
The twenty-eighth?
Yes.
To the twenty-eighth of June. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you very much.
I, I would.
Discussion?
Well, discussion. I would like the applicant to also pursue, you know, a contractor who specializes in drainage and get their recommendation as to what would solve the problem, rather than just, well, gee, maybe a berm or a driveway is going to do it. A professional opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I would just have to see what the, what the curb cut is, how far I could dig into the street or the beginning of my property for that.
So exploring all options.
Yeah.
I think is probably the correct way to pursue this. Whatever those options are, discuss with the city, you know. Consult the experts in the field, and then you can bring back the written documentation. So the board has something to see, and you have something that you're confident will work as well.
Have you asked the city about installing another drain where the water pools?
I have not. They actually just fixed that drain, because it was just full of everything, and it sunk in the ground. They just fixed that last month, but I have not asked the city to install another drain. I don't know if that would be, if it would be easier for me just to do a driveway or have my whole street torn up again.
Another option.
I could definitely ask, I just don't know the channels to ask to do that.
I, I mean, they tried to have water flow down the street to a drain, and, and in my, around my house, there was a trouble spot where the water would just pool because the street wasn't leveled properly. They did eventually fix it, and they've installed more drains, so that is something that could be done. But I, I'm skeptical that adding a driveway is going to solve your problem, and I'd like you to investigate other, other solutions.
We. Mr. Falk.
I was just going to say that, you know, Mr. Morrow can ask DPW that, you know, they look into, or DPW look into possibly adding another catch basin, because they do get filled.
filled up with sand and other debris, leaves, and after a couple of years, if they're not taken care of, you know, they can build up quite a bit so they don't even work. So it's worth it for you and your neighbors to ask, you know, at least ask them to clean it out. I know they have interns that do that and summer health that does that.
And if I could just ask, you know, Carter and Andrew Kay, if you, you know, would you be able to help direct them to the right people to speak to at DPW?
Sure, absolutely.
Any further discussion on the tabling motion? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lyon now, how do you vote on the tabling motion?
I vote in favor to table.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote on the tabling motion?
I vote in favor to table, and could you repeat for me the second on that motion?
Mr. Shaw.
Got it, thanks.
You're welcome. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote on the tabling motion?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote on the tabling motion. And sir, please, do we refer back to the planning department, Mr. Falk, Ms. Poyer? They will direct you and help you, and thank you very much for agreeing to do this.
You're welcome.
We'll see you at the end of June.
I'm sorry?
I said, we'll see you at the end of June.
Yes, what was the date again?
The 28th.
June 28th.
So it's same time, 6:30 in this room.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, case number six. East Dunstable Properties LLC, owner John Forsier, Mark Deagle applicant, L. East Dunstable Street, Sheet 109, Lot 76, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3. Proposed Lot 1, minimum lot area, 7,500 square feet required, 6,375 square feet proposed. And 2, minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 85 feet proposed. For proposed minimum lot area, 7,500 foot square foot required, 6,375 square feet proposed, and minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 85 feet proposed. All request to subdivide one lot into two lots. This is in the RA zone in Ward 6. Is there somebody here to present this application? Please, up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and you have up to 15 minutes to present your case.
My name is Jessica Forsier with East Dunstable Properties, and our address for business is 24 Merrimack Street in Nashua, and my address is 3 Chaucer Road. You already stated what the variances were requesting. So what we're, granting these variances would not be contrary to the public interest. It would not conflict with the purpose of the ordinances and would not alter the character of the neighborhood. The land that we're discussing has over 151 feet on the Burnett Street side and 85 feet on the East Dunstable Street side. The houses and the lot sizes we're proposing would fit into this neighborhood perfectly. We're asking for approval of these lots where each are short in depth by only five feet and in short with square footage by 1,125 square feet. These are not large exceptions. In fact, there are currently two houses on Burnett Street, 16 and 18, that have 25 feet shy of the required footage, frontage, leaving them at 1250 and 1350 square feet short of the required lot sizes. So it definitely fits into what is in that area. There are several other houses within a stone's throw that also have a lot depth and have lot depth and width shortages, giving them all shortages in total square footage as well, including 18 and 1/2 East Dunstable is 25 feet short in width, and then 2 Harris Street and 2 Hatch Street are also actually 40 feet short on in depth. And again, we're just asking for an exception for five feet. I understand that change is never easy and we're not trying to upset longtime residences that live in this neighborhood. And I also want to make it clear that we personally are longtime Nashua residents and run our business out of Nashua, so we do in fact care very much about the city, its neighborhoods, and our neighbors. We would not propose anything that would threaten its health, safety, or welfare. That said, I wanted to address a couple of questions that we think might arise. I know the proposed plan that we sent in can be confusing, I think, to people who aren't used to looking at any kind of plans. We didn't want to rush to pick house plans as we want to make sure that the home styles fit in the area as best as possible. Therefore, these plans only reflect building envelopes. I know that it can be confusing because if not familiar with this idea, it can look as if the house planned for the lot were going to be just a big rectangular box. These envelopes are just to illustrate that all setback rules would be abided by and that these houses would not be any closer to any lot lines or any other homes than what is currently allowed by city rules. Another concern that we thought might be had was that we would need to connect water and sewer services for the new lots, because right now, water and sewer goes to number five, it actually comes from Burnett Street to 5 East Dunstable, which goes through one of the lots that we're proposing. We would actually keep the services for the second lot on Burnett Street and run new services from East Dunstable Road for the corner lot and 5 East Dunst, and 5 East Dunstable also from East Dunstable, so that we wouldn't have to disturb or cut into Burnett Street, which was just recently paved. We believe granting these variances can be done while still observing the spirit of the ordinances as the proposed houses and lot sizes would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, but in fact be right in line with the current neighborhood. By granting these variances, substantial justice would be done and surrounding property values would not be diminished in any way. I think that that, I don't know if, do I need to talk like about each of the individual things that were numbered where I filled things out, or is that okay that I just?
That's up to you. This is your case, you choose how you would like to present it.
Okay, so the lot that is there was, my understanding initially, part of 5 East Dunstable, where there's a home that was built in late 1800s, maybe 1900s. So the division of this separate lot sitting there, it doesn't seem to have been done not with any intention of it being a building lot or not being a building lot. I don't know why the separation was done, but I think that that's where it leaves it kind of in a hardship where it's a larger lot than most of the other lots that are over there on Burnett Street, but yet it's just shy to be the two lots. So to us, that's, that in part is a hardship, because it just, it seems kind of senseless to leave it as one lot in comparison to those other lots that are over there. So, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier.
Yeah, I guess I was wondering, while I hear your position about not presenting any houses and just a building envelope, did you have any concept or offer maybe, you know, what the houses would be like, you know, how they might be in concert with the neighborhood?
We have had a lot of discussion about it. I can't say to exactly what style house, like I don't want to say that it's going to be a Cape or a New Englander, but it's definitely gonna, will be houses that are in line with what's over there, with character too, because personally and as a part of being with this company, I don't, I don't like when they put up a cookie cutter house and it just has no shutters and it just looks like they threw up a house, and that area I think deserves better than that. So I, I mean, I know that doesn't go further than my word, but that's why we didn't decide on the actual houses at this point, because I also think, I'm not sure on what will happen with driveways, where driveways will be allowed to be placed or not. So I guess I feel like that discussion would come into play with what style house would be there, whether or not a garage would be on the house, what side it would go on, and what would fit best there. So that's why we just did the building envelopes for now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask, oh, Mr. Falk.
I was just gonna say, it's perfectly acceptable, just to indicate a building envelope box. The request is not the style of the house or anything, this is not the historic district area, so as long as they can build a house within that setback box, that's really what they're asking for.
Thank you. You may now sit, or you can continue to stand, that's your choice. I'm going to ask, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? I don't see anything. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition or with comments, questions, or concerns? Please step up to the mic, state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. Please forgive my nervousness. My name is Joan Fitzgerald, and I live on 1 Oakland Ave in Nashua. I believe that this application will alter the character of the neighborhood. There aren't any other lots in that immediate neighborhood that are undersized, that are less than 7,500 square feet, and in fact, oversized lots, more than 7,500 square feet, are more common in the neighborhood than undersized lots. To name a few would be 3 East Dunstable, 5 East Dunstable, 8 East Dunstable, 9 East Dunstable, 10 East Dunstable, 5 Burnett, 5 Oakland, 12 Oakland, 7 Robie, and 12 Robie. The proposed lots are 1,125 square feet smaller than a buildable lot, which is 15% smaller than a buildable lot. In perspective, the 1,125 square feet is about a 22 by 50-foot rectangle. The additional benefit of taxes due to, taxes to the city due to the housing shortage, as stated in the application, is really not a reason for a variance. Adding two homes with two families would cost the city more in education taxes, education costs alone than the city would be able to recoup in taxes. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Safety is really a big concern in our neighborhood. The intersection of Burnett and East Dunstable is really a dangerous corner. There are so many accidents at that corner that happen there, so it's difficult now to turn onto East Dunstable from Burnett. I don't know how it would improve with an additional house on that corner. Burnett Street is really not a wide street. With the addition of possibly two driveways on that street and on-street parking, that will restrict sightlines even more and possibly make that intersection more dangerous. That lot was just recently purchased, and the buyers knew what size that lot was when they purchased it. There really isn't any opposition to building a house on that lot. It would just be more in character with the neighborhood to build one house on that existing lot. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Mrs. Forsier, you have.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I'm chair, you didn't ask if there's anybody else in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition? I know that. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, or concerns? I don't see anyone. We do have two letters from a Butters. The first one, "I am opposed to subdividing this lot and providing a variance on this historic property. This proposal is not a minimal variance request. One, the lot size reduction request is 15% less than the required 7,500 square feet. At 6,375 square feet, 127 feet times 50 feet, this is a small lot, and the lot depth from 90 feet should not be allowed. This request will likely put a large house on a small lot. Approval of this variance will change the character of the surrounding properties and neighborhoods and potentially set a precedent for future variances." This is from John Merzfelder, 14 Stevens Street, Nashua. The second letter is Brian Moynihan, 9 East Dunstable Road. "Out of an abundance of caution with the new COVID surge, I will be unable to attend the May 24 zoning meeting because of underlying health issues and mobility problems. I want this read into the record that I am opposed to building house on these two non-conforming lots. Granting this variance would be contrary to the public interest and would conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. They are taking two large houses and putting them on 6,300 square feet lots, postage stamp lots. I take exception to the claim that the character of the neighborhood will not be altered. After this is built, they will move on. I will still be here, and I see it will alter it in the negative. I will agree that there is a house within 500 feet of house that is under 7,500 square feet. That house was built in 1965, when the zoning laws weren't as restrictive as they should be today. Once again, I take exception to the builder's statement. I, Nashua, I think of the taxes, I seen, I say Nashua thinks of quality of life for all concerned. Nashua has a housing shortage, Nashua has an affordable housing shortage. These homes will not alter the, will not address the real problem for the marginalized and downtrodden. Right now, the housing market is a runaway train. When this market really cools, these two houses on these two non-conforming lots will detract value from my property. These two properties are not just five feet short on the depth, they are, also are not 7,500 square feet that the RA calls for as a reasonable use for these properties. Would have the borders so, oh, go back to the drawing board. Of course, Burnett Street is not as busy as East Dunstable, but it is very busy. It is used as a feeder street to the, I can't read this word.
Lawndale.
Lawndale Avenue Neighborhoods, also as a shortcut from Main Street to East Dunstable and vice versa. Cars are parked on both sides of Burnett Street, creating a narrow passageway in between with a lot of elderly living on the street. This could create a problem for fire, police, and first responders in an emergency. I do not see a hardship for these builders. They only recently just bought this property and know full well what they are buying. The city has a five-year rule on cutting into streets that are paved. Burnett Street paved, I guess, paved in 2022. And that is from, oh, I read that, Brian Moynihan. Now, Mrs. Forsier, you have the ability to respond.
Madam Chair, Mr. Courier.
Mr. Courier, I apologize, I didn't see you.
I think we, I think the board received another letter. I'm looking at one in my email from John Forsier. Carter, Mr. Falk, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
I feel that this could be read into the record.
Yeah, there was another one. Can you?
It was just before the letter, the handwritten letter you just wrote.
Ah, I know. There it is. This letter is.
It actually originated from John Kooten.
Yeah. It originated from, let me see where his name is.
It's actually in favor.
Yeah, and it should have been read pre- Yeah, and it should have been read previous when we asked for "in favor." I can't...
And the subject line, FYI, from John Koots.
This is in support, and it is from John Kootzos? And it was sent to Mr. Forsier and then to Mr. Falk, the planning director. "John, I think you are fine with obtaining the variance without a letter in support from me. I have not heard from anyone at all. I led a neighborhood zoning battle that lasted a year and a half back in 2005, '06. If there was any opposition brewing, they would call me. By me staying silent, that will be implied consent on my part. Carter Falk would remember. One question: Are you planning to build the houses, or do you think you might sell the lots? I feel you would do a great job with it." And that was from Mr. John Kootzos. Okay, all letters have been read. Mrs. Forsier, now, in the comments that were in opposition, you have the opportunity to address them.
Okay. I'm just trying to keep straight the different ones, to touch on them. So one of the things that was stated was that there are no other lots that are under the 7,500 square feet in that area. And like I had initially said, I'll just repeat, there definitely are. There's several that are within a stone's throw, like I said, and then there's two right on Burnett Street. And again, the majority of this property, these two lots, is on Burnett Street. So to me, that definitely shows that it's much in line with what is over there. And those ones, like I said, are 25 feet short, and I'm... we're asking for five feet. So I just wanted to point that out. And the idea in the initial paperwork that we submitted regarding the taxes and the housing shortage, they weren't one in the same. Those were two separate benefits. Not that the extra taxes would help the housing shortage. It was that the extra taxes would help the city of Nashua to have an additional lot that pays taxes, and we can't determine whether those people will have children or not have children and whether it will affect the, you know, the money that goes to school for children or not. So I don't know that anyone could predict that. And then it would, in fact, help the housing shortage. And to go to two different people who were against it, to speak to their comments that the housing shortage is a shortage, there is also, yes, an affordable housing shortage. So we have two issues here in Nashua. It would help one of them. I didn't say anything about affordable housing, although, yes, we'd like to keep it affordable, and that's what we'll try to do. But I was speaking in terms of the housing shortage, and it would, in fact, help that because there is one here in Nashua. Also, in terms of driveway house placement and visually when you're coming up Burnett to go onto East Dunstable, right now, as the lot sits, a house can sit right close to that corner with no variance at all in the view line of someone sitting and waiting to turn at that corner. So we're not asking, like I said, to go any closer to that front or side lot that's on that corner. The house that would be there would still be within the required setback. So I don't see where that would be more of a hindrance than what's already allowed, I guess. And then, two, I think I don't have a lot of time, right? The other one that said... If I could find it, the other one. Oh, no, I already spoke to that. And again, after it is built, we won't just move on. Like I said, we live here. We care about... My kids go to school here. We've been here our whole lives. Our business is here. We do care about the city, and we do care about what it looks like. Our houses that we live in and own tell that, and houses that we've built here in Nashua tell that. Not that I can direct anyone to go see them right now during this, but I think that that's all I had to say.
Thank you. And Mr. Carrier.
I actually had a question for the applicant. There was one other point made, and that was about... There was testimony that this was just recently purchased. And so I just wanted to... For a question for the applicant, was the applicant aware that it was... It's zoned currently without a variance for a single-family lot? And was that part of the consideration? I'm just saying, if this application weren't approved, just kind of walk me through the hardship of the implication of that.
So we were aware that it was very close to being two lots when we purchased. I guess, to not get too deep into it, we bought both, the house that's there at number five and the lot. Number five is... How do I say it? It has extensive work that's needed. It was a wonderful clean house. It's a gorgeous property, but it just needs so much. And to be honest with you, straightforward, there was insurance things that came up right off the bat, that it was difficult to even get insurance on the house the way that it is. And those were unexpected. So, you know, things change when everything washes out and shakes out. So, you know, our ideas changed, and we're trying to work with what we have, I guess, now. So, yeah, we were... Yes, we were aware of the size. We were aware of how very close it was. But we were also aware of the other houses in the area, the nature of the neighborhood and as well, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And now, Mrs. Fitzgerald, if you want to respond, you have the opportunity to respond, or you don't. If you're comfortable with what you've said, you can just rest and leave it there. But you can only respond to the points that have been stated. You can't bring in something new or respond to something different.
I guess the only thing that I would respond to was maybe I didn't make myself clear when I was talking about... In the application, they wrote that they were requesting the variance because there is a housing shortage. And yes, there is a housing shortage in Nashua, New Hampshire, everywhere. But again, that doesn't entitle them to a variance just because there's a housing shortage. When I talked about the cost of taxes, they also wrote in the application that there'd be an additional benefit to the city for taxes. Can we make the assumption that a family would live there? Maybe yes, maybe no, probably. I don't think that there's a lot of older people that are looking for new housing right now. So when I talked about the educational cost, it was because there's a cost per child to go to school in Nashua, and the education cost alone is greater than anything that the city could recoup in taxes on two additional lots. Again, yes, it's always been a vacant lot in the neighborhood. I've lived in this neighborhood my whole life. Change is inevitable. We, you know, you have to roll with it. But I believe it would be more in character with the neighborhood to just have one house on that lot than two. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Minkera.
I'm really struggling to find support for the application. Not that I think it's inherently unreasonable, but when I am looking at the overall character of the neighborhood, there are other lots that are as small or smaller than what's proposed. But I don't think that's the predominant character of the area, particularly for the lots that front on East Dunstable. So it's hard for me to get to the point of seeing the hardship or what about the lot that makes it so different or distinct that relief is required for it to be used in a reasonable way. Certainly, it could accommodate a single-family home, and a single-family home on this lot, you know, I think would be very reasonable. And certainly, it would not be inconsistent with the density of the lots on either side of it and many of the other ones surrounding it. So I'm struggling to get there with this one.
Thank you. Mr. Lino.
Like Mr. Minkera, I am having difficulty with this. I will note that neither taxes nor housing shortage have any role in decision that this board makes. We have five points of law to be met, and I don't see taxes or housing shortage in any of those. As Mr. Minkera said, this lot could easily support a single home. It would require a variance for lot depth, but that would be relatively easy to grant. I don't see anything special conditions of the property that require dividing this into two small, non-conforming lots. So I'm interested in hearing opinions from other members of the board.
Mr. Carrier.
Well, I too am struggling with this application. In summary, I see it more like Ms. Fitzgerald sees it. And I think a very important point is the traffic. I mean, this end of East Dunstable Road at morning rush hour, afternoon rush hour, Saturday mornings, I plan my trips downtown as a guy who lives... Would normally go down this street to avoid this area because the traffic backs up, and you're waiting more than one light cycle to get onto Main Street. And that causes difficulties. There's people who make U-turns to cut through the neighborhood because, you know, they're aggravated at waiting the light cycles. So while, I mean, I hear the point that you could build a house up close to the road right now, I don't see that that would happen if the variance wasn't granted. It would be kind of natural to position a home where the other homes on East Dunstable are positioned. And in terms of density, I mean, I concur that there are some, you know, smaller lots in the area, but there's also, as Ms. Fitzgerald and as Mr. Minkera points out, that to me it's predominantly larger lots in the area. And I tend to think that on East Dunstable and the view that you have, this would be more out of character than in character. And so I'm not feeling it's meeting the criteria, and at this point, I don't find support for it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
This is also difficult for me. And I'm going to go back and forth, trying to figure out where I really came at. Again, I think in general, the lot depth underage is not too significant. I do believe that there may be a majority of homes that the lot sizes are within... Are overly 7,500 square feet. But there are some homes there definitely that are under. So I don't know how we characterize the character of the neighborhood. I think that's... I think everyone at least has an opinion on that. So right now, I don't really know. I would stay on this. I guess I look at it also as, is there enough there for me to say that I would definitely be in opposition of the application? And I'm not there yet even, so I'm just... That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I...
Wait, I'm sorry to butt in. Somebody did just give another reaction, but in Zoom, most of Mr. Boucher's testimony was not heard, and then another Zoom participant just gave the same reaction. Just wanted to point that out. Could I be so maybe bold as to maybe have Mr. Boucher just summarize his thoughts maybe a little closer to the microphone? It does seem to be a microphone problem either in or around.
Wait, we're going to switch mics. Thanks, Mr. Carrier.
In summary, I struggle, like the rest of the board members, with this application. In summary, again, the lot depth, I don't really find an issue with. I'm just trying... I'm just struggling with, do I have enough... Do I believe this...
What did Jimmy say?
Is that still cut out?
Very end cut out.
It cut out at the very end. I'm sorry.
It is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I can't find support for it. I think it pretty much comes down, for me, like, you know, the easy ones are if all the other lots in the neighborhood were of this proposed size or very similar, and this is the one last large lot, then I find those are the easy ones. I feel like it's much more of a compelling argument. I agree that, you know, the East Dunstable lots primarily are similar or even larger or, you know, generally like the existing lot. So there's this kind of like balance. But ultimately, I guess for me, it just kind of comes down to, well, I guess I'll comment specifically as far as the, you know, the depth. I think that really is pretty minor, and I don't think that would be something that would be really noticeable or impactful to the majority of other residents of this area. But the lot size is much more significant. And I think what, you know, it kind of comes down to when I look at our criteria, I just don't see how essentially allowing this non-conformity to then exist with two lots for two different things, but especially the area, when the lot is sufficient to build a single-family home on. So I'm sure that the applicant would do a great job. I think they have a good reputation. I think they would do, build homes that would be nice for the neighborhood. I just don't see where essentially the hardship or the special nature of the property exists where there's a reason to grant this non-conformity. So I can't support it.
Thank you. And I think, myself, I'm probably more in Mr. Boucher's camp than anywhere. To the points taken, the depth, that's really inconsequential. It's not very large. It's minimal. The almost 1,100-square-foot difference, we've kind of done that before. However, in this neighborhood, wouldn't make a large impact because of that difference. And so I lean in both directions. But, and you're correct, the builders have a great reputation, and they build good homes. However, I think we're just going to have to see where the motion goes when we make it at this particular point.
Should we split these up into two motions?
Mr. Carrier, do you want this split up into two motions?
I don't have, I guess, opinion one way or the other. I mean, I guess in general, I feel that for what the applicant's looking for, the two criteria are intended to be taken together.
Yeah, I just verified your response, and Mr. Falk supports your response.
Well, my thinking on this is that the board has expressed an opinion that the lot depth variance is likely to be granted, but the lot area depth, there's some... It's not clear on that. And I thought that...
And I thought that rather, if we, because if we deny both of the, or let's say, let's say that we did not approve this application, and we denied both variances, well, then that would be a problem for them because they couldn't build even a single house on that lot. But if we split it up and made two motions, one for the lot depth, and let's say that that one passes and the other one doesn't pass, then they still have the lot depth variance granted, and they can run with that.
Mr. Shaw.
Is there a problem with that?
The lot depth is only an issue when you're trying to have two frontages on Burnett Street.
That's what I saw.
The property exists now as a frontage to East Dunstable, and it's got more than enough depth, isn't it, like a hundred and twenty feet or something?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Right.
Never mind.
It would, I mean, I guess if, and I don't even think the city would care, because I think, I just know as far as if they wanted to front the property, even to face Burnett Street, I still think the, still would meet the depth from the front of East Dunstable. So I don't think we're precluding anything, even if we were to deny. But I would, I would still, if I could just continue, though, I still think there's different sentiment regarding the lot depth versus the area, and yes, they all kind of go together, but I don't know. I guess I would rather vote on the lot depths versus as one in the areas as a different motion. That would be my preference.
So you want to?
Yeah. Because I, because I see, again, to Mr. Lionel's point, just, we ran into this recently, and I don't know that it could play out the same way here, but we ran into something where we essentially denied everything, and then kind of in hindsight said, maybe we shouldn't have treated it as a bundle when it was, you know, that was different. I think it was a driveway thing. But still, I guess I can approve part of these and not approve the others, and I would rather voice that. I mean, arguably, we could do all four separately because there are four requests, but I think I would suggest bundling the depths and the areas. That'd be my preference. It looks like Mr. Falk might want to.
I hear you, but what's the point? Because they can't do it. So I see unpacking it if it allows them to do something and not something else, but I don't see the point of unbundling it when they simply, even if you, we go through the exercise of approving one, they still can't do it.
He, Mr. Mancara brings up a good point. Mr. Falk, here you go.
Well, there are two different requests. We know what they are. The depth is only five feet off. You know, it, I mean, for all we know, perhaps they want to do a lot line relocation between the empty lot and five East Dunstable Road, because that one looks like it, I don't have any glasses on, but I'm not sure what that frontage is.
Hundred.
Hundred. So there would be enough room to maybe do a lot line adjustment so that that lot depth would go away for both of these requests, and that would also bring them a lot closer to the area. So that's, you know, something that they may want to look at.
That would require another variance, though, for the setback.
Maybe. It may be, it may be a variance for the area. We don't know what the, depending on where the lot line is adjusted to, like, say they do a lot line relocation between five and the vacant lot. Five has a hundred feet of frontage. They only need RA seventy-five feet. So if they move that over, I can't figure it all out in my head, but it would make it a lot closer to the seventy-five hundred.
I mean, we're debating what ifs. If somebody wants to make a motion.
That's why, I mean, they may not even want to do that, but that's an option, but, you know, that's why I would take them separately, each of the variances separately, because to deny the lot depths, they could possibly come back with a lot line relocation and meet the depths for both of those lots.
Okay. Mr. Boucher, you had stated that. You had put your hand up to make the motion.
No, I didn't. Not to make a motion.
No, not to make a motion?
I'm all set. I was going to make a comment, I'm all set.
Are you all set with your comment?
No.
JP, try pulling the mic closer, that might be.
I was going to make a comment, but I don't want to anymore. I'm all set. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
It's a matter of being close enough to the mics, apparently, tonight.
Yeah.
Also, or protecting your voice.
Yeah. Our, our sound person is having a fit.
And also, I was just speaking, just looking at this, I don't know what the applicant wants to do, whether that is even an entertained thought to remove the house of five. I know they said it's in need of a lot.
I understand. There seems.
Let's just, someone please make a motion so we can move on.
Yeah, it's getting late.
Okay, then. We're, I have, I want to ask a question. Before we make a motion, I would like to ask Mr. Falk a question.
Okay.
If the, let's do a hypothetical. If the applicant chooses to take down the house and, on five, and adjust the lot line and come back, do they need to file for another variance, separate and apart from anything we're doing? Or if we tabled this, could they piggyback off of this variance to come back?
At the risk of interjecting, I already did the calculation. If you take down the house at five, you have sufficient area for three lots, meeting the zoning requirements, and you can meet the depth requirements.
So they.
There would be no reason to get a variance.
To come back.
There'd be no reason to get a variance at all if that's what they chose to do.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mancara.
Mr. Falk. Thank you, Mr. Mancara, for throwing.
That's if they want to do that, too.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay.
After answering the question.
Thank you. You always answer stuff. So would somebody care to make a motion? And Mr. Carrier, I think we're going to be splitting these motions.
No, no, I don't think we are.
Now, we're not. Okay, we're not. Never mind.
Well.
I'm walking it back.
If you want to go ahead and make a motion to cover them all, please do so.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
I think it helps. Okay. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner, East Dunstable Properties LLC. The applicant is John Forsier and Mark Daigle, addresses L. East Dunstable Road, Sheet 109, Lot 76, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. Proposed Lot 1, minimum lot area seventy-five hundred square foot required, sixty-three seventy-five square feet proposed, and 2, minimum lot depth ninety feet required, eighty-five feet proposed. And for Proposed Lot 2, minimum lot area seventy-five hundred square feet required, six thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet proposed, and minimum lot depth ninety feet required, eighty-five feet proposed. All request to subdivide one lot into two lots. This is in the area zone word six. The board believes that this variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, that there are no special conditions of the property that would make it reasonable to grant the variance, and that we believe that the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We do not believe that the application is within spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have some opinions that it will adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. It does not appear, it appears to be contrary to public interest, substantial justice to the applicant would be served, but I make a motion to deny all four variance requests.
Do we have a second? Thank you.
Mr. Carrier seconded, actually.
Excuse me?
Mr. Carrier seconded, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier.
Okay.
See where I am. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of denial.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor of the denial.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
In favor of denial.
And Mary Ellen McKay, I will vote not in favor of the denial. Mrs. Forsier, that is three to do, so the motion to deny is approved. Thank you for your application. Should you care to reflect back with Mr. Falk on any part of the discussions, please feel free to do so, and thank you for coming tonight and presenting your application. And at this point, I am going to take a five-minute recess.
Put it on the left. We're live.
All we hear is one moment.
I'm sorry.
Dawn Didion, owner, Seventeen Pleasant Street, Sheet 81, Lot 37, requesting the following: Special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-47B for a major home occupation for an in-home childcare for five children, and variance from Land Use Code Section 190-36B4 that requires onsite parking for principal resident use. No onsite parking available. Is there somebody here to speak in support of this application? Please, first of all, state your name and address in the bio. Nashville, New Hampshire.
Hey, don't be so direct. Dawn Didion, Seventeen Pleasant Street, Nashville, New Hampshire.
Thank you. And if you need to pull it down, go ahead, because our sound person is letting us know. We need to be more clear.
So I'm applying to have a home daycare. I've been teaching for 21 years in the early childhood education. It's my love and my passion. I just bought the house in Nashua last summer. I'm living here for a year. My weekends feel like a home daycare because all the neighborhood kids just come out over into my house. And I kind of drive into Boston every day where I work now, the commute's a lot, and I'm kind of missing being with my own child. So being able to have kids, five kids at my house, one of them being my daughter, still focusing on education and all the things that I teach in the schools I work in now, but at home, more on a one-on-one basis with kids, is what I'm kind of going for. Again, I don't have a driveway at my house. It is street parking. However, it's not a business where parents will stay. They drop their children, they leave. I also, due to COVID, have a policy that parents don't come in my home during business hours. Neither do I have a plumber or anybody because I don't want to bring germs in with the kids, risk anybody getting sick. I also have Elm Street Garage right here, walking distance. It's like four houses from my house. That's used for public view, so when they come tour or anything, I've told them, please use Elm Street Garage. Walk on over, you can tour the home on off-hours, which is a great exception. I also use Bright Whale app, so the parents get to notify me 15 minutes before arrival, whether they're picking up or dropping off. So I'm at the door, ready to grab the children, so there's no standing time. They actually put in the app when the child woke up, what they do, and how their night was, so all the communications there all day long. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Carrier.
I guess I'm not familiar with the app, but when, if this daycare were running, would you anticipate that the five children are dropped off by car or by walk from the local neighborhood?
Well, I have three families in the neighborhood right now that are asking me when I'm opening, so a few of them would probably be in the neighborhood. They've had babies, and they are constantly inquiring, what's my timeline? So that would be a good possibility. Also, with the bus route here, they could be taken. possibility. Also, with the bus route here, they could be taking the bus here or dropping off by car. With the app, again, I'd be at the door, ready to grab the kids. It wouldn't be anybody stopping and coming in. It would just be drop the kids and go, pick the kids and go.
So I guess, just a follow-up question. For the kids being dropped off by car, where would the cars be pulling off or stopping to do the pickup or drop-off?
They would have to pull into the on, it's all on-street parking on the side of the street, so they would have to find a spot, or they would have to use the Elm Street Garage and walk down.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? There's no questions, so you may have a seat. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, there's nobody on Zoom. And there's nobody present, well, case number eight is present in the auditorium. But is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition with comments, concerns, or questions? And there's no one on Zoom, so I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
There were a number of support letters included in the background.
Oh, I wrote myself a note that there's letters, and I went past it. Mr. Falk, do you want all of these letters of support read into the record, or should I say we have letters of support, name the people who wrote them because you have them in the record?
I don't think it's necessary to read them all, word for word, but you can just say you have letters from Megan Grayhill and Tasha, and just state their name and address. We have them all in the record.
Okay. The following letters are in support of this application. Megan Graybill is a childcare licensing and business expert. Dawn is an experienced provider who has significant childcare experience, and we believe local families will greatly benefit from her daycare being conveniently located in the neighborhood. Judy Kavanaugh on Cambridge Street from Boston. Ms. Dawn Didion worked as part of our infant team at the Torrance School in downtown Boston. Dawn brought her many years of infant experience with her to this role. She was knowledgeable about infant care and child development. She was prepared and able to keep ahead of the children's needs by having materials set out ahead of time. She's able to think quickly and keep her calm during those times when many children were seeking her attention. And also, we have Esther Grunblatt. She's the director of the Cambridge Preschool of the Arts. I am writing this letter to recommend Dawn Didion as recipient of a home childcare license. I have known Dawn for six months as she has been an infant teacher in the preschool I run in Cambridge, Mass. Dawn has been a loving and incredible teacher with fabulous leadership skills and an excellent rapport with parents. Matthew Brooks, Esquire 222 Eileen Street, Worcester, Mass. I write in support of Dawn Didion's application for a zoning variance in order to allow her to operate a home daycare. Dawn is a former client and friend who I have known for approximately five years. During my career as an attorney, I've worked with hundreds of clients who have faced all kinds of adversity with poise, intelligence, strength, and compassion, but none more so than Dawn. Dawn is an incredible human being, a responsible caretaker of children, and an asset for any community who would have her as a childcare provider. Nicole Forgione, and she just lists her email address, no address. I'm writing in regard to Dawn. We worked together at Global Children's School in Woburn, Mass. for about one year. Dawn was the one at the school with the most experience and expertise in childcare. It was her first year teaching this age group, and Dawn was a great source of support and advice. And then Ashley McGovern, who did not give an address. I am writing to recommend Dawn Didion as a recipient of a home care license. I have had the pleasure of working with Dawn for six months in the infant class she led with two assistant teachers and eight children. The care and support she provides to our children and their families is immeasurable. And from Chrissy Folsom, and she too only lists an email address. Dawn Didion is a caring, passionate, driven, and responsible childcare professional with an extensive background of experience in early childhood education and care. Dawn would be an asset to any community and reliable and trustworthy quality childcare. And the letters go on. I only took tiny snippets. I will now close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Carrier.
You know, my sense is that the applicant is, you know, very well experienced, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, has a lot of accolades from that, and that speaks volumes. You know, I am struggling with the parking situation, and I'm hoping that maybe some other members can get me beyond that. My sense would be, from living near a home daycare, is that folks would be dropping kids off right in front. I mean, the idea of driving over and parking and setting the meter in the Elm Street lot, and then if you can park on the first level, let alone go up, and then walk a child over and then go back, I just don't see that happening. But I hope I'm wrong on that and can be convinced otherwise. And that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor of the application. I think that, again, as the applicant stated, that this is all on-street parking. I, you know, she's, this is a daycare with five children, one of them being hers, so that's four. I don't think that that creates an issue with the neighborhood. Again, it's not for me, I guess, in my personal opinion, it's not for me to say how somebody's going to drop off their child. I think that anybody going to the neighborhood with any type of business or visiting finds a way to do what they need to do. And so I don't think it's going to be impactful at all for the neighborhood. So I don't really consider the parking issue as stringent as, as more than what it is for the whole neighborhood as it is and as it exists. So with that, I want to support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm in support. I think, you know, while technically this is also in RC zone, it's right on the edge of the D1 MU zone. It's very much a downtown character of the neighborhood. It's an area where many folks are not relying on vehicles for transportation or either walking or using public transportation. I think the fact that it's as close as it is to the Elm Street Garage as well, that there is, I think, solutions for anybody that would be wanting to drop children off. And I think it's more likely than anything, as the applicant even noted, that it's going to be the local residents that want to use her daycare and will be probably extremely convenient for them. So I think the situation is such that I understand normally the parking is a bigger concern, but I think very much considering the location, to me, I do not have an issue with that. So I am in support.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I also support the application. I definitely think it meets the special exception criteria. And with regard to the parking, I mean, this, you know, I think to Mr. Shaw's point, this is a dense urban neighborhood. It's right on the edge of downtown. Most businesses in this area, you know, you don't get to park on-site. It is only up to five. And also just note, Pleasant Street is a very small street. It's not busy in any way, so I don't see this as causing a traffic problem for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I'm also in support of both the special exception and the variance. I agree that there won't be much disruption, and I don't think the parking issue is going to be significant. It would probably be self-correcting if it was, and I expect that she will get customers from the local neighborhood, so they'll be walking. So I'm in favor of both applications.
Thank you. And myself, Maryelle McKay. I'm also in favor. Pleasant Street, I think you, to Mr. Minkara's point, it's a very quiet street, and unless you are absolutely going there, I don't see, you know, any reason to go there. You're not going to use it as a pass-through because it's more complicated than if you don't. So, and when I went by and looked at it, I probably was stopped longer for the two people who were walking across the street that met in the middle and were commiserating before they, before they went than maybe a parent would be stopped to drop off a child. So I too am in favor. I did want to just address, there were criteria for special conditions for the childcare, and I'm going to assume that they've all been acceded to. And I noted by the nodding of heads in the affirmative that that is a correct statement. So would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw.
I will. I just, the only question is, order of, do we do the variance first because of the parking is, because that's one of the criteria, or do we do the special exception and then do the variance after? I don't know if it really matters, but I just.
Mr. Falk.
I think I would do the special exception first because that's the use of this property is going to be as the home occupation, and then do the variance.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. We're going with the special exception first.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Dawn E. Didion, and at Seventeen Pleasant Street, Sheet 81, Lot 37. This will be for the special exception request from Land Use Code Section 190-47B for a major home occupation for an in-home childcare for five children. It is listed in the table of uses, as just noted. It will not create undue traffic congestion or undue access. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other drainage system. Special regulations not fulfilled.
Mr. Shaw was just dropping out.
Yeah, I just, I got corrected. The, there are six criteria for the special conditions regarding childcare facilities located within a dwelling unit. And five of those six are met by testimony. The number four, that there is onsite parking for the principal residential use, is not met, but it will take up a variance request that addresses that. And it will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. And with that, I move to approve this special exception.
And thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second.
Tap your microphone. It fell asleep is the high-tech term.
Holy moly mama. Mr., oh, trying to see how I handle this. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the special exception.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay. I vote in favor, so that is five to zero. Now, Mr. Shaw, would you like to continue?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Dawn E. Didion, at Seventeen Pleasant Street, Sheet 81, Lot 37, for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-36B4 that requires onsite parking for principal residential use. No onsite parking is available. Again, this is in the RC zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Specifically, this is in regard to the in-home childcare for five children, and one of the special criteria requires on-street parking. However, this residential unit has no existing on-street parking and is very consistent with this part of the neighborhood, so there is no other means with which the applicant can reasonably pursue other than this variance request. Therefore, it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will have no effects, negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's definitely not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. And with that, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor. It's five to nothing. Didion, congratulations. Both your special exception and your variance have been granted. As we've said all evening, any person has the option to appeal any decision made by this board, and they have up to 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any comments, questions, concerns, need any support, please re-reference back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. Again, congratulations, and thank you for presenting your application. Progress Realty Trust and Barbara A. Denault and Christine Cancretti, owners, 84 Lake Street, Sheet 102, Lot 4, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, 40,040 square feet existing, 209,088 square feet required, and to exceed maximum number of stories, two and a half permitted, three proposed, to construct a 24-unit multifamily building. This is in the LBRB zone in Ward 6. Is there someone here to present this application? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney from here in Nashua, along with Mr. Tancredi, who is the owner of the property. I may just take a moment, Madam Chairman, and pass out some handouts that I have.
Absolutely. If you get them to our, you can.
Thank you, sir.
The piece of property we're talking about is located on Lake Street. It's part about in the vicinity of Sandy Pond. It is an area that is zoned LB and RB. It's a split zone which allows us to come to the board for not the use. The use is allowed with a conditional permit by the planning board. What we have to come to you for is the density, the number of units, and the height. It's allowed two and a half, two and a half stories, I was going to say two and a half feet, two and a half stories, and we're looking for three stories in a particular plan. The proposed plan is to demolish the present building and construct a new building of three stories comprising of 24 units of multifamily. The area has different uses, as indicated by the fact that we're in a double-use, double-use area. The area has LB housing, it has a nursing home, warehouses, a single-family and multifamily in a particular area. Butting our property is a large Abutting our property is a large nursing home, Carville Nursing Home. Across the street is some elderly housing, and there's a 24-unit multifamily right across the street from us. There's a warehouse further, after, further northeast in that particular area. And then going west would be some single-family and multifamily homes. As I indicated, being a split zone, the multifamily is allowed with a conditional use permit from the planning board. So we have to go to both boards in order to construct this if we're granted permits from both boards. And we're here because we need a variance for you, from you, for density and the height before we can go to the planning board and get a conditional use to allow for multifamily housing in that particular area. As I've indicated, directly across the street from us is a 24-unit house multifamily. There's, down the street is a, and when I say down the street, almost across from us as well, is an elderly housing with 360 units. Directly abutting us is a nursing home, the Carville Nursing Home, and it butts our property on a couple of sides. Let me tell you that the, I think that you're familiar with the Nashville Board of Alderman had a housing study done by RKG Associates, Inc. And RK made a couple of comments regarding the area. On the last page, E, in section E, I guess states, and you'll see it highlighted, if the city is looking to create more housing opportunities to accommodate future populations and employment growth, multifamily and mixed-use development utilizes less land area per unit than any of the other housing topography. So what they're, my interpretation of what they're saying is that with multifamily, you can get more units for housing than you can on a single-family basis, and Nashua should be looking to allow for more of that type of use. And on page 32, I mean, on page G, but it's page 32 of the report, if the trends from 2013 to 2018 continue in Nashua, the city will need to consider how to increase the production of smaller units to accommodate the increase in one- and two-person households. In other words, that, there's a, there's a major demand. I think that you've read it in all the newspapers for housing, and multifamily is one of the ways of helping to solve it because of the, you can have smaller lots. Also want to point out that in this particular use on this particular lot, there's 36 parking spaces provided. In many instances, when you do get multifamily, you don't have the parking. This lot does have the parking for the number of units. The proposed use is not out of character with the area and not contrary to the public interest. Is, as indicated, the proposed use is allowed in the neighborhood. Justice will be done, and the use will not alter the essential character of the particular neighborhood. In the handout, the first page is, A, is a copy of the lot. B, the purpose of this is to show you the various large buildings that abut this piece of property. And a lot of these buildings came much later than, than this building was built. So a lot of them are pretty new. Next is a density study, and I went to see the density study of being proposed, 84, 24 units at 84 Lake Street. And they pretty much are in the same area as the newer developments in that area as far as the multifamily is concerned. As far as the height is concerned, the best example I can give you is the building right across the street. It's two and a half stories. The first story is in the ground. So it's half-hidden in the ground. I think that three-story building on a 24 unit would look much better than having that particular half-story in the ground. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. Maybe I'll have the answers.
We hope you have the answers, Attorney Prunier. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to make one general comment for whatever it's worth. When you hear the press saying that there's a need for housing in New Hampshire, not only Nashua, but in New Hampshire, it's a fact. And, and we have to do something about it. I guess I'm going to just keep my comments to myself after that.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm curious if, if this proposal, I think it would be coming under the, the new affordability requirements.
It's subject, it's subject to that ordinance.
Yes, okay. And is the plan, now, I know there's a, there's a buyout, but at some number of units, you can no longer buy out, and you have to provide a certain amount of the affordable housing units?
I, I think.
What's the plan right now?
Yeah, Mr. Shaw, is that our plan is, we are in a particular area, in the city area, the rents would be different than if we were down on Splitbrook Road or some other area. So the affordable rents, I think, are going to be, of course, affordable rents in Nashua are not that bad as for doing, so we, we have to comply with that ordinance, and we will comply with affordable housing.
Okay. And then, I guess, just, I understand the need, and I think what I'm hearing, the justification on this proposal is basically that there is at least a number of similar high-density housing units in this area. But I guess, I feel it'd be maybe remiss of me to not, you know, note, and just, I guess, just the fact that this is a five-X ask, you know, when there's, when you only have 40,000 square feet, and it would require over 200,000 square feet to have 24 units. I, I guess I just, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, just.
First of all, the, the amount of square foot that we comply with, if we were RC, as an example, it would only be 90,000 square feet versus the 200,000 square feet that's involved. So there are parts of the ordinance that are lower. And, and that's the problem. You've hit it right on the head. The Nashua zoning ordinance has to be redone, and, and you can ask the planning staff, they're, they're aware of it, to allow more density in the particular areas. I think RC should almost be doubled, and I think the planning staff would probably, and I'm, without talking to them, will tell you that I think that they, that they, they understand that that has to be done. We have to do with that situation, even single-family lots. Well, you've all been to other cities. You've been to Florida, you've been to California, you've seen some of the things. Houses are different in that area. They're much closer together. And if, if you want housing, and at reasonable cost, you're going to have to do that. Now, if you want a big ranch outside the city, well, fine, and you can afford it, go ahead and do that. But these are the things, we have to adjust our housing, housing, construction in the area to, to today's standards. And you just have to look at some of the other areas, some of the other cities that have, have this housing. And you hit it right on the head. That's, that's what some of the things have to be done.
Yeah, and of course, we're in that tricky spot because we, we're not, we're not the ones that get to legislate or get to determine that ultimately, right? We're just supposed to look at where is this reasonable and how does it fit in? You know, I, I hope that some of what you're talking about at least gets discussed and decided upon, whether it is to change or not, but that that gets, you know, dealt with at the legislative level at some point.
I, I hope we get started to do that. I think there's some talk that we had this year. I think there will be a lot more in the legislature next year. I just, you just look at your grandchildren and so forth. How are they going to have to afford these things? And it's really, on multifamily, it's really for the young out of college or the young married, the startup. You know how you started. You started with an apartment, then you found a small house, and then you got a bigger house when you had more children. It's a step, but we have to provide the product to allow that to happen. And I think that's what the RKG report is, is trying to point out, that Nashua has to do those things. We don't want to see people sleeping in their cars in a parking lot on Main Street.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Attorney Prunier?
Thank you.
Attorney Prunier, I have a question. I have a question. I just wanted to.
Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. I just wanted to ask about the parking. There's 24 units, you said there's only 36?
Thirty-six, thirty-six.
So it's not a requirement that you would need two per unit?
No.
One and a half?
It's up to the planning board as to have it, because we will have one-bedroom apartments and even the two-bedroom apartments. I, I believe that the income level will be at, not a necessary for two cars all the time, and we have a bus stop down the street.
Okay.
And we're downtown, which is, is another purpose. And besides that, gas is going up so fast, no one's going to want a car anyways.
Well, it's a necessary evil.
You're right.
Since, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. The bare minimum for parking requirements is 1.5.
Okay. Kind of what I thought just wanted to.
So they meet it.
Yeah, one and a half.
One and a half to, 1.9 is the max.
They meet the minimum.
They meet the minimum.
Barely.
Mm-hmm. Okay, there is nobody in the room, for the record, I'm going to ask, is there anybody here who would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in support of the application? Is there anybody here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher?
I believe I'm generally in support of the application. Again, the applicant did a good job of showing us the, the area, the density of projects around it. I think the closest thing to this, to this proposal is, again, the property across the street.
Tap the mic.
Again, just in general, I'm in general support of the application. I, I think that, again, the most similar piece of property is across the street, same number of units. I, I think this is really, whether or not, you know, I believe that having the full three stories instead of, as the applicant stated, having to bury a half-story into the ground, I, I think at this point, I, I think that it, it would, it would, again, fall into generalcy in the area. The density, as Mr. Shaw states, is true.
Say it, tap it again.
Tap it. Oh, there you go.
For the density, as for the density, it's a, it's a huge ask, but again, that, the, what's proposed, I think, again, is to me a reasonable project and what they're asking for. And again, I'm just looking at what's similar in the, similar in the area, excluding the nursing homes next door. I, I think the project across the street is similar, and I think that, again, I, I just will support the application at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I'm in support of the application. I, the density for this type of building doesn't bother me, and I think the height is reasonable, so I would support it.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I still have some struggles with the, with the density, but I think the fact that this is relatively similar and consistent with a number of other structures in the immediate area. I also appreciated Attorney Prunier's noting that, you know, if this were in the RC zone, which is pretty much adjacent, it wouldn't be as nearly as far off as it is. And the fact that the, the place across the street is actually got slightly less total square footage. I, and, and knowing the, the housing need is, is so great, but also we, we have no opposition to this. So I, I guess I'm, I'm okay with it as far as the area. I think the three stories proposed versus the two and a half allowed, I think will, is, is also reasonable and will, will fit in with the, some of the area, and I don't see that as being some imposition that will look out of character or inappropriate for that area. So I, I am in support of that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mincaro?
I, I also support the application. It took me a little. Bit of kind of unpacking to get there, but when I look at the property, you know, I have to ask, what's, what's a fair and reasonable use of the property? This is a very mixed area. I, I'm not sure of that building, a new office building there. It makes a whole lot of sense. In terms of the density proposed, it's a significant exceedance, but then when I look at it and think, well, under current zoning, four and five units, that doesn't really seem to make sense economically or with the character of the area. As Mr. Shaw noted, we, we do have other, particularly the elderly housing in the area that's a similar density or, or greater density. And in terms of the height, one, I think it's reasonable, but, you know, I'd also just note, we have a huge mill building right down the street that would be significantly higher. So this is a really mixed area. It's a busy street. It's a split-zone property. So I, I think for all those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
You know, I too am in support. Certainly, it is a big ask, but, you know, if, we've seen structures just like this kind of come, you know, come before us with the housing shortage, you know, as maybe justification, you know, and at other places in town, say at the end of Simon Street, the board has rejected it because it's been challenging for other reasons. However, this location, you know, as, as the board has all testified to, we have a large mill building, as the applicant testifies to, there's other multi-unit structures nearby. So, I mean, I agree with Mr. Shaw's comment that, you know, such an overage might be more of a legislative thing than by variance, but to me, it makes sense that a building of this size and density could be located in this area. We haven't heard any negative testimony. There's a bus route on the street. You know, it's a busy street, but it has its own entrance, its own off-street parking. So the three stories, to me, it, you know, it doesn't, I don't think that's out of place given the tall buildings nearby, and, and I'm in support of it. And part of that is because of the tailwind of the housing shortage, but I think in this case, it, it's okay to, to go by variance, to approve this by variance, so I'm, I'm in support.
Thank you. I too am in support. And like everyone else, when I first saw it, you just, you go, wait, what? But. But after all the conversation that happened here and all the explanation and the rationale, it makes logical common sense. And so for all the reasons that have been stated by every other member of the board, I too am in support of this. Application. And the presentation was very well done. Okay. Would somebody care to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Progress Realty Trust and Barbara A. Denault and Christine Tancredi, owner, address 84 Lake Streets, Sheet 102, Lot 4, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, for minimum land area, 40,040 square feet existing, 209,088 square feet required. And two, to exceed maximum number of stories, two and a half permitted, three proposed, to construct a 24-unit multifamily building. This is in the mixed LB and RB zones, Ward 6. The board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, the size of the property, its location near other similar buildings, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. We believe it is in the public interest and that substantial justice would be served. So I make the motion to approve these two area variances.
And I will second that. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Attorney Brunier, congratulations, your variances have been granted, and as we have stated all evening, anyone has the option to appeal any decision made by this board. They have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, concerns, comments, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. And again, thank you very much for your well-done application and congratulations. By a wing and a prayer.
I think the last 25 years, Jared and I have spoken several times a week, this whole time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've talked more than each other's, to each other than we do our wives.
We have no motions for rehearing. I don't have an agenda. We have no agenda, correct?
We're three weeks out.
Oh, it's three weeks out. That's, see, I can't count.
We have an extra week and.
Woo-hoo. We do have two sets of minutes. Mr. Lionel.
On the April 26th minutes, Mr. Courier's name is misspelled on page seven. About three-quarters of the way down is Mr. Courier.
Oh, it does say that.
But other than that, I did not see.
I was not at this meeting. Would somebody care to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Make the motion to accept the minutes of April 26, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I will also vote in favor. That is five to nothing. Then we have the minutes of May 10th. Does everyone have an opportunity to read over those minutes? Are there any edits? Seeing none, I make a motion to accept the minutes of May 10th. Thank you for your second, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I vote in favor. That's five to zero, and that, unless anybody has anything else, concludes the business of the evening. Yes, Mr. Shaw?
Moved to adjourn.
So moved.
Tap your mic. Best for good luck. Hi, Jack.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Jack.